Good evening, everyone. I'd like to reconvene CD Councils, etc. Agency to the Westminster redevelopment agency meeting right now, seven oh two P M. Wednesday, January twenty seven, twenty twenty one. Roll call, please.
Mayor Tom.
Here.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Here.
Councilmember Doe.
Here.
Councilmember Ho.
Yeah.
Councilmember Ho.
Here.
And councilmember Manzo.
Yeah, she here, yeah.
Councilmember Ho.
Here, sorry.
And councilmember Manzo.
Here.
Okay, all councilmembers are present.
Thank you. Next, we have a salute to the flat will be councilmember Ho and invocation will be Vice Mayor Nguyen. So please stand.
Stand, hand over your heart and follow my lead. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Remain standing, please.
Vice Mayor. I'm sorry, I wasn't unmuted. Heavenly Father, we ask for your guidance and direction as matters of importance are discussed this evening. May the decision make here be to the benefit of all citizens of Westminster, our community. Amen. Thank you. Thank you, councilmember Ho and Vice Mayor Nguyen. Next, we have report from CD Tony.
Yes, there's nothing to report on a closed session, but I do believe there is one item that may need to be added to the agenda. Councilmember Ho. An urgency item?
Yes. Thank you, Christian. This week, after the agenda had already been posted, the governor canceled mandatory stay-at-home order he issued in December. The cancellation of this order means that once again, our local restaurants who have been hurt so badly by COVID nineteen crisis now have the opportunity to start serving food outdoors again. It is really important that we help our local businesses as much as possible because of how badly they are being hurt financially during this pandemic. The problem is that many of these businesses don't have suitable locations for outdoor dining or don't have sufficient money to buy or rent tables, chairs, tents, heaters, etc. That would be required, especially during the winter months. I realized that the city is struggling financially also, but I heard recently that there may be some limited funding we can obtain from the county that the city could use to set up a program to help these restaurants. Specifically, I'm thinking of having the city create temporary locations where multiple restaurants from different parts of our city could be featured on a rotational basis. So I am asking that we add this item to the agenda so that the council can provide direction to our staff on whether they should pursue this idea and reach out to the county to get the funding. This issue is urgent because our businesses need help right away. You can't wait two weeks until we meet again. In addition, the county funding is limited, and if we don't act quickly, it may end up going to other cities that submit applications more quickly. And as I said before, this wasn't even possible last week. It's only because of the unexpected lifting of the stay-at-home orders that this opportunity is even possible. So I just want to be sure we act quickly so that we make sure we are doing everything we can to help our local businesses. Thank you.
I'll second it. All right, so we have the we have the we have the motion for urgency item from councilmember Ho and second from councilmember Manzo.
I have I have question about it before we vote. I I have heard nothing about this one before, and I want to know where, you know, where we get this information? And the the money from the county, is that going to all the businesses or is going to to certain businesses? And I know that the 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 order is lifted already, so I don't know why is there's an urgency for this one.
Yeah, this I heard the money is going directly to our to the cities and in district, we're in District One. So I believe this money is going to be given to all the different cities in in District One, and I think that consists of like four different cities. So I just want. Yeah, go ahead.
Let me let me just interject. If we're gonna add it to the agenda, then we should make a motion to add it, and then we can have discussion when the item comes up. The intent is merely to have a discussion tonight, not any action. So if you want to add it, then we should vote on that, not not discuss it at this time.
Thank you.
All right, CD club, so.
Yes, so that was a motion or request made and a motion made by councilmember Ho, seconded by councilmember Manzo, and that will be added as urgency item five point five. So roll call vote to add the item. Councilmember Doe. Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Ho. Yeah. Councilmember Manzo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Tom.
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero to add urgency item five point five.
All right, any report from CD club?
Yes, we do have Robert Acosta, our emergency operations coordinator, who will be making a COVID update tonight.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Am I okay? Yeah, okay. All right. Good evening, Mayor Tom. Council and staff have been asked to provide an update on the COVID and the vaccine response as the changes occur. As reported just a few minutes, as reported a few minutes ago by councilmember Ho, on Monday, the state lifted the extended stay-at-home order and the curfew. Orange County adopted those changes pretty pretty rapidly, and these changes allow for certain business sectors to to reopen in a limited capacity. However, due to the case count, the positivity rate and the hospitalization rate, Orange County still remains in the purple tier, and this is the most restrictive tier. So the Southern California region has seen a prolonged decrease in all the metrics that are used for tier placement. However, we are still firmly in that that purple tier, and we're likely to stay there for at least the next few weeks. Internally, in the city, we have seen a downturn in cases. It's certainly slowed down noticeably. And as of yet, we have zero cases of confirmed workplace transmission. A big part of this success is our workforce's efforts to wear masks, social distance, and focusing on hygiene efforts. The vaccine effort. So the vaccine effort, the state has recently undergone a modification. The system has prioritized seniors that are sixty-five years and older as the top priority to receive vaccination vaccines. The best way for Orange County residents to go about getting a vaccine is to register on the Athena app. The system will automatically prioritize the registrants and notify them when they're allowed to book an appointment. The vaccine program in Orange County has been called Operation Independence, and this 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 program continues to gain momentum. And in addition to the Disney super pod, which show you reported about last week, a second super pod was opened, and that was at Soke University. And just for the point of clarification, a pod stands for point of dispensary. So we Soke University opened just a few days ago, and today myself and one member of the staff were fortunate enough to tour the site, and it's pretty impressive. There are three more super pods that are planned to open in the upcoming weeks. The two primary challenges that these sites face are vaccine supply and the personnel to staff them. So we can't control vaccine supplies. Those are coming straight from the federal government. However, we can help out with personnel to staff them. Community members wishing to volunteer for these sites can do so at one O C dot com. It's O N E O C dot com, and they're taking people that want to volunteer at any capacity, and they're gonna plug those people into the to the super pods. Additionally, just today, the county made a formal request to the cities to provide volunteers, and we are currently working on this request, and we anticipating helping out at some level in the near future. In addition to the super sites, the county has activated activated mobile pods. These are mobile vaccine clinics that will reach out to targeted populations. They're primarily gonna serve senior citizens in their home cities. In anticipation of securing one of these sites, about two weeks ago, our community services started a COVID nineteen vaccine interest list. As of today, we have three hundred and four seniors on this list. We are assisting those that need help registering on the Athena app, so they'll be able to participate if this this comes to fruition. The county has assigned a district liaison to each city in Orange County, and we're working with our liaison and if the program comes to fruition, we're pretty confident we'll be having one in the near future. The COVID guidelines and the vaccine response are constantly changing. There's differences that I reported just since the last meeting here. They're constantly being updated by the C D C, the C D P H, and also the Orange County Healthcare Agency. The H C A and Operation Independence are providing us updates via conference calls three times a week. We're doing it every Tuesday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, and everyone's working hard to deliver the most accurate information. But however, because it's so dynamic, sometimes what we report today isn't accurate tomorrow. But we're doing our best. Also, recently, the county has hired a P R firm, and that P R firm will begin communicating in various languages, including Spanish and Vietnamese. End of report. Thank you. Any questions?
Appreciate your report. I still have a I have a question about in a website and app. It doesn't have another language slide for example, Vietnamese, and even in Spanish, it only offer in hotline information. But I mean, like, I have a lot of I have a lot of members from different community in our city calling me, and they still have a lot of issue, a lot of problem. How can they? How can it register themselves in a website? And I think we all aware that there are large number of seniors who live in our city. They are not really familiar with how to how to register themselves in a website or how to use an app. So do we have any other option? Do we have any other alternative? I heard about the mobile pod, and I mean, it seemed to be really helpful. But do you have any inside information that when will we expect to have mobile pod in our city?
Um, so do you have any information on the mobile pod? No, I can tell you that we've walked a site recently, today as a matter of fact, and have agreed on the site, and it is viable and it will work. We, if 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 it works, we're talking, if everything goes to fruition, we're looking at, you know, within the next thirty days to have a site, but we don't have a specific date yet. And as far as the communication problem, it's been recognized, and and they listen to us as far as the emergency managers and service coordinators. You brought up at the last meeting about the lack of alternative languages, and we brought it up, and the P R firms addressing that. So I'll certainly, I'm confident that they're they're addressing the language barriers on Athena, but I will confirm that in our next meeting, which is tomorrow, and I'll relay it to the city manager to to you and your staff.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Okay.
Well, I I have a question. You know, the there's so many resident. And, you know, I I would say that in the for the Orange County, not just Westminster, they have a tough time register with Athena because it's requiring email. Many elderly, especially the Vietnamese and immigrants, they 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 don't have email, and they cannot register and the proper and and the account require passwords and all that stuff. It's very extremely complicated. Is any way that we can streamline that to the point that can help these people, you know, without the hassling of of having an email and or in a account password and all that stuff?
For the sixty-five and older, our community services section and that is taking an interest list, and they're assisting people with signing up in the Athena app. And so that's how we're addressing the senior citizens as far as, and that's the only people we've been charged with signing up as as a city or the senior citizens. As far as the general public that are under sixty-five, there's a hotline that is set up from the county. And I apologize, I don't have that with me. Do you have that, Christine?
Yes, the county hotline is seven one four eight three four two thousand. So seven one four eight three four two thousand. I know people have been having issues with the lines being backed up with that hotline, but they are expanding the number of staff members that they have. They're increasing the number of staff members that they have to handle the volume of phone calls. So so they are working on that.
Yeah, it's just, you know, I have an opportunity to help a few elderly couples and, you know, people in our in our city and in Orange County, and it's extremely difficult because each one, each person has to have their own unique email. I don't know if you get anybody in this council familiar with that. You have to have a unique email, okay? Once that email being used, you know, like, say, one couple, they want to use one email, they will not allow them to register. And it's just like, it's so, it's so extremely difficult, just just for the senior citizen to register. I don't know if you can convey that, bring that message to whoever in charge of it, and maybe they can simplify the process. Maybe they have can have a space of group of people that people can reach out to help them register, because right now, they want they want the vaccine. They are qualified to get the vaccine, but they cannot do it. And, you know, when I helped them, I was like, oh, my goodness, I never, I did not realize the the level of difficulty, you know, even for a person who who flew in and everything, just have a tough time register, let alone, you know, these elderly, senior people who sometimes they don't speak English, and it's very complicated. So if you can convey that message to whoever in charge, that we can simplify the process and address the problem to help our senior citizen, especially, you know, the the those who do not speak English, that we are very grateful for that. Thank you.
I understand your frustration, and we hear it daily, and those are some very specific concerns. What I am encouraged by is there is the ability of the county and and even the state to adjust when they see that there's some flaws in the system, just like they readdressed the tier system to prioritize the the elderly. But there's definitely some recognition that or they've definitely recognized that there's challenges with the Athena app, and they're revising it right now. As a matter of fact, like, one quick, and I'll just make a quick point. An adjustment they made on the Athena app was up until recently, you had to keep checking every hour to see if there was appointments available, appointments available. And they adjusted that and made it so that's a virtual queue. And that when there is, when you're, when your time comes up in the in the virtual queue, you'll receive an email to set your appointment. So that's the encouraging part is they are adjusting, and they are flexible. And we've, I'll continue to communicate with concern because that is a challenge, because a lot of households that have multiple people don't have multiple email addresses. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other representation, CD club?
Nothing, nothing else for.
Any report from you? No?
From, oh, for me?
Yeah.
No, not tonight.
Okay, so then we have oral communication.
Yes, so we did receive several ecomments, so I will go ahead and read those. And then anyone who would like to speak after ecomments, you can raise your hand or just raise your hand in the just raise your hand, and I'll call on you, and you'll get five minutes to speak. So first comment is from Margie L. Rice, and it states, I am very much opposed to selling city property, leaving no parking for our community. If you, the city council, are going to sell property owned by the citizens of Westminster, it should be voted on by the people who own the property. Again, that's from Margie L. Rice. The second comment is from Don Anderson, and it states, "On July nineteen, twenty seventeen, the Westminster City Council approved an exclusive negotiation agreement with Sheldon Development. Almost four years after the approval of the E N A, Steve Sheldon, C E O of Sheldon Development, is now proposing to build one hundred and three condominiums on the parking lot in front of City Hall and on the parking lot behind the senior center. He is also proposing to demolish City Hall, built in nineteen seventy-seven, build a new city hall and community center, which the city does not need, along with small pocket parking lots to replace the two expansive parking lots where he wants to put the one hundred and three, three-story condominiums. As we approach the four-year anniversary of the approval of the E N A in two thousand and seventeen, I offer my opinion in the form of a report card as to the performance of Mr. Sheldon over the past three and one-half years. I base this on all that I've seen, heard, and read regarding the E N A since July nineteen, twenty seventeen. Subject and grade: Number one, ability of Sheldon Development to fund project. Grade F. No comprehensive funding plan has been submitted. Number two, meeting intent of city's goal to make Civic Center a community destination. Grade F. The proposal takes away open space and parking with no community destination components added. Number three, conformity with the city's one point seven million dollar general plan. Grade F. Proposal does not create a walkable town center as described in the general plan. Number four, economic feasibility of project. Grade F. No comprehensive study has been submitted. Compatibility of project with the the eleven existing uses in the civic center. Grade F. No comprehensive study has been submitted. Number six, meeting city's urgent need for affordable housing. Grade F. The condos would not meet the affordable criteria. Number seven, responsiveness to deadlines in E N A. Grade D. Key deadlines have been missed multiple times. Number eight, contacting all eleven stakeholders in the civic center to learn needs and concerns. Grade D. Only a limited number of contacts have been made. Number nine, generating revenue for city's general fund. Grade F. One hundred and three condominiums would not generate enough revenue to solve the city's increasing budget deficit. Any changes to the civic center must be for the benefit of all. Those who work in the civic center, those who visit the civic center, Westminster residents, Westminster businesses, business owners, and the developer. The Sheldon Development proposal benefits only Sheldon Development. Please look for a developer that has the financial resources to quickly develop and implement a mixed-use master plan for the civic center that creates a walkable town center with housing while addressing the desires and needs of all stakeholders and not just the bank account of the developer. Thank you. And that's from Don Anderson, Westminster Community Development Director for fifteen years, retired, and Westminster resident for forty-seven years. Next comment is from Anita Rice, and it states, Mayor Tretah and city council members, please do not sell any more city property to anyone without taking it to the people for a vote. We need this property for public parking. Mr. Sheldon has had an agreement with the city for the past three years to develop a tentative plan for his condo project. Has Mr. Sheldon gotten the necessary ports, master parking plan done as in his agreement with the city by two twenty-one, twenty-eight? I'm sorry, two twenty-eight, twenty-one. Please do not let us loose this much needed parking space for our community. Thank you for your service to our city, and that's, again, Anita Rice, former planning commissioner, Westminster citizen. And the last ecomment is regarding item number six point two, ordinance number two five six five, moratorium on evicting tenants. And this is from the Kennedy Commission. Dear members of the council, the Kennedy Commission is a broad-based coalition of residents and community organizations that advocates for the production of homes affordable for families earning less than twenty-seven thousand annually in Orange County. Formed in two thousand and one, the commission has been successful in partnering and working with jurisdictions in Orange County to create effective policies that has led to the new construction of homes affordable to lower-income families. Given our state's high cost of housing and the extensive rent burden for many California families, we worry that any loss of wages related to the outbreak of COVID nineteen will only further imperil with homelessness our most at-risk families. We know that the need to protect residents that live paycheck to paycheck from the economic fallout of this virus includes protecting them against facing eviction and homelessness, which would only further spread this disease and make its contamin make its containment harder if people don't have a home to care for the health, safety, and welfare of their families. On January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, Governor Newsom said, quote, "COVID nineteen continues to devastate communities across our state, and too many Californians remain one paycheck away from losing their apartments or homes. These families need protection and relief now, and our work to address these fundamental issues must continue with urgency and resolve," end quote. "We commend your work on this urgency ordinance to continue to protect Westminster tenants. While a great start there are sections of the ordinance that can be strengthened, we recommend the following changes. Section one C, eviction. Number one, amend the section so that the acceptable causes for decreased income include the tenant was or is sick with COVID nineteen or caring for a household or caring for a household or family member who was or is sick with COVID nineteen. The tenants compliant with a recommendation from a government agency to stay home, self-quarantine, or avoid congregating with others during the state of emergency. The tenants need to miss work to care for a homebound school-aged child. Section one D three, timely partial payment. Remove this section to provide greater flexibility for tenants experiencing substantial COVID nineteen-related financial impacts. Timely partial payment. The severity of financial impacts related to COVID nineteen can vary and may not be as easy to document. This section should be removed. This ordinance should act in faith that tenants will pay the amount of rent that they are able to on a monthly basis. For example, if a tenant has to stay home and or care for a homebound child or care for a family member, this will significantly impact household expenses such as groceries and other essentials. These expenses may be difficult to document, as tenants may no longer have receipts for these purchases. Therefore, a tenant would have difficulty documenting the financial impact of wage losses and increased expenses. And then section one G, repayment of rent required. Extend the repayment period from one hundred and twenty to one hundred and eighty days. We urge that you pass an ordinance with the recommendations provided. Immediate is immediate assistance is necessary to keep low-income working families in their homes and not to exacerbate homelessness." And again, that was from the Kennedy Commission. And that concludes the ecomments received at this time. If I have any speakers who would like to speak, please raise your hand. Okay, we have one speaker. That would be Terry Rains.
Good evening, Terry.
Good evening, Terry Rains, Westminster. Item 3.5 is the CityNet homeless report for December 2020. It is encouraging to see a high number of outreach contacts and street exits for the month, and I hope it continues. Sadly, much of the 95,000 CARES Act money allocated toward the rapid rehousing program has not been used. The CityNet report should be presented to council and the homelessness task force every single month going forward. It should be revised to include monthly details of every single outreach encounter, not just highlights, and to add monthly shelter and permanent housing placements for a better picture of the city's homeless issue. The county needs to conduct the complete HUD mandated point-in-time census as soon as safely possible because only those "hows" were to be counted this month due to COVID. We need complete and current data to make informed decisions about how to best address the issue in our city. We cannot wait another two years. Companion item 5.3 is an update on homeless shelter efforts. The homelessness task force recommended an emergency shelter and partnering with other agencies. Sadly, the central spa cities could not come together and obtain large amounts of funding to open full-service navigation centers like the North Spa Cities did. But we need to focus on the more proven success of the Housing First model, which prioritizes providing permanent housing to people experiencing homelessness, thus ending their homelessness and serving as a platform from which they can improve the quality of their life. Emergency shelters are not the cure-all to homelessness. In fact, they are the most expensive, least effective, and most often rejected option by homeless residents. Permanent supportive housing is the ultimate goal. People experiencing homelessness need a place to call home, not just a cot, and most need ongoing assistance, which permanent supporting housing provides. Most of the surrounding cities have already opened emergency shelters. The CityNet report shows we are able to place most that agree to go to one. The 425-bed Yale Transitional Center opening soon will greatly increase our access to emergency shelter beds. If the $400,000 grant mentioned in the staff report is in reference to the F S B 2 grant funds, the requested amount was $400,000 per year for emergency shelter operational costs for five years. But that alone will not fund annual operating costs for a shelter, let alone pay for construction or building conversion. Also mentioned is a recent conversation with Stanton. The county and Jamboree Housing Corporation, in partnership with the city of Stanton, were awarded $23.1 million in funding to convert two motels in Stanton to permanent supportive housing with a third-site negotiations. Why are these much smaller cities able to partner with other agencies and nonprofits to come up with real solutions, but we can't? Item 6.1 is residency verification process for city commissions, boards, and committees. Voter registration should not be the sole residency verification. There are people who register to vote in Westminster but do not actually live here. Verified residency should be required for all positions, even the personnel board. In addition to voter registration verification, applicants should provide a copy of their state-issued driver's license or I D card plus at least two documents dated within 30 days of their application proving their current residency. Current utility bills, including cell phone bills, pay stubs, credit card or bank statements, and rent statements received should be allowed as long as they clearly show and match the applicant's full name and Westminster address and are dated within the last 30 days. If an application has been on file with the city longer than 60 days, the applicant should be required to submit updated documents. The bylaws for all boards should be revised accordingly. The staff report contains 31 applications submitted by 26 people for commissions and committees. Only 45% of those were submitted by the original January 7 deadline, including only three of the eight incumbents. 39% were submitted between the first and second deadline, and 16% were submitted after the final deadline. Yet there are not enough applicants to fill the commission on aging and personnel board, so those needs to be extended further. We seem to have a lot of trouble attracting and appointing quality applicants who really wish to serve and make a difference in our community. Our boards are underutilized, some virtually inactive going over a year in between meetings. We need new motivated people with fresh ideas willing to work hard to improve our city. So please keep this in mind when making your appointments tonight. And finally, again, Mayor Todd, Vice Mayor Nguyen, and Councilwoman Ho. You cannot use race or political favors to hire a new city manager. It is against the law. You also cannot hire someone because they are your friend who will further your personal agendas. There are rumors in the Vietnamese community that you plan to do exactly that again. Consider this a warning. If you do not hire the person best qualified for the job, you will be facing some serious consequences and personal liability. You can bank on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Judy Boyd. Judy?
Hi, everybody. Good evening. I would like to acknowledge and thank Kimberly Ho for raising and having added to tonight's agenda urgency item 5.5. I think this is a really great idea, and I look forward to more discussion around it. I wanted to also circle back around to the discussion from about 10 minutes ago about the Athena application and mention that there was a pretty good article in yesterday's Orange County Register where Orange County, several members of the Board of Supervisors have expressed their frustrations with the Athena application and the company that designed and implemented it. And they are pressing and hopefully languages such as Vietnamese and Spanish will be added hopefully by the end of the week. And there are plans to add Korean and some other languages as well. But Andrew Doe has been very vocal against it, you know, the performance of the app, as has another council member. So, you know, I, I trust in them and I think that we're going to see a revamp of the app. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. At this time, last call for speakers. It appears I do not have any additional speakers.
All right, so if we don't have any other speakers, so I close oral communication. Next, we have consent calendar. All manner, listen to the consent calendar. I consider routine and may be approved by a single motion, followed by roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless member of the city council or staff requests that specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action or discussion.
I'm going to approve the consent calendar.
Second. All right, we have a motion and second to approve the consent calendar.
Yes, sir. That's a motion made by Councilmember Ho, seconded by Vice Mayor Nguyen to approve the consent calendar. Roll call vote, Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Ho.
Yeah.
Councilmember Manzo.
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen. I'm sorry, Vice Mayor.
Yes.
That motion carried 5 to 0 to approve the consent calendar.
Next, we have regular business, 5.1, increase to D K S Associate for Engineering Services related to I-405 improvement project. City Council, you want to have a staff report or you comfortable with a staff report?
Can I have staff?
Okay, so may I have a staff report?
Yes, good evening, mayor and members of the council. This item consists of a change order to a P O we have for D K S, which is an engineering firm who is helping staff with the traffic matters along the 405 freeway. With the I-405 widening, it needs a lot of traffic engineering review for detour plans and then, and then specific items as the freeway connects to the city streets. Initially, we issued a P O for D K S for $200,000. And then any amount above the $200,000, our purchasing ordinance required that we come to you for approval. So we are here tonight asking you to approve an additional $250,000 to that P O. All this money is paid by O C T A, who is building the project and, and funding the project. The city already, we already had agreement with O C T A that the first one we had on April 13, 2016, mayor and city council authorized the execution of cooperative agreement number 5-3615 between O C T A and the city. At that time, that agreement included $1.2 million to go toward staff repayment for staff time, including P D and engineering and all that stuff. And then to that, to that agreement, we had an amendment in February 26, 2020, also approved by mayor and city council where we added additional $623,000 to fix city streets that are adjacent to the I-405. And then also amendment number, another amendment number two added another $838,000 to that agreement. So all that money is we have on board, and then this $250,000 will come out of that. We also anticipate more funding coming from O C T A for that. And then as the time goes and as the prices and then the expenses go up, we will be asking O C T A to give us more money. But at this time or tonight, we're asking for your permission to add $250,000 to D K S, who already have a contract with the city because of the fact that we are going over the $200,000 allowed without going to council. That's my report.
Motion to approve.
Okay, I got questions.
Sure.
Basically, this, this amount will be get reimbursed from O C T A, is that correct?
Yes, actually, this amount we already have on, in our funds. They already gave us the money for, for the project. And then if you look at the fiscal impact in the report, we have the account number where that money is at this time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is a change order, correct?
It's, it's, I guess you can call it a change order, but it's not really a change order. We issued, we issued a contract with D K S to do certain amounts up to $200,000. We are exceeding that amount, or we will be exceeding that amount. So it's just, yeah, for engineering services.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
Second on the floor. Oh, oh, sorry. Thank you. This next 250, how far does that get us down the road? Like, how, how much longer would that?
Actually, actually, it's, we did not anticipate spending this much money that soon, but because of COVID, the contractor is going very fast or quicker than anticipated. So therefore, they're doing more work on the job, and therefore that kind of triggering a lot of more engineering review for the project. So we really don't know roughly exactly how long that's going to take us. It depends how fast they go. But we will be ahead of them. If we think we're going to run out of money, we will come back to you to ask for more money. Again, it's O C T A money, it's not city money.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So second, the motion? Okay, so Councilmember Doe, second motion. Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion made by Vice Mayor Nguyen, seconded by Councilmember Doe. And that's through move as recommended, which is to approve an increase to the existing purchase order for D K S associates in the amount of $250,000 for engineering services related to I-405 Improvement Project for fiscal year 2021. Okay, roll call vote. Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Ho.
Yeah.
Councilmember Manzo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Todd.
Yes.
Motion carried 5 to 0.
Next item 5.2, 2020 Operational Area Agreement Update and Jurisdiction Approval Guidance. City Council, would you like to have a staff report or you? With the item? Let's do a staff report, so the public knows what it is. Yes, chief. Lot of back.
Good evening. Yeah, our emergency operations coordinator, Robert Acosta, is going to give the staff report on this issue, and he will be able to answer any questions you have after his report.
Good evening. Thank you, chief. Can you hear me okay? Okay, all right, so item 5.2, right, is the Operational Area Agreement Update. And we're asking that the council adopts the revised Orange County Operational Area Agreement as, as it was approved by the Orange County Board of Supervisors, May 19. The Operational Area Agreement formally recognized this, the county of Orange and its political subdivisions as the Orange County Operational Area, and this is specific for purposes, or this is for the purposes of emergency management coordination. The operational agreement was first approved in 1995. The document lays out a framework for inter-jurisdictional cooperation. In 2017, the process to revise the operational agreement was initiated. It, after following an extensive review, the revised operational agreement was approved by the Orange County Board of Supervisors, like said, on March 24. What's, what's new to the agreement is it removes some antiquated information, and it clarified some of the roles and responsibilities of the operational agreement and mutual aid plans. There are five significant changes to the Operational Area Agreement. The first one is the creation of an Operational Area Executive Board. These, there's five new board seats that were created, and this is to accurately represent the interests of the Operational Area or the county itself. Number two is the, the recognition of O C M O. O C M O is the Orange County Emergency Management Organization, and that is a committee that meets once, once every quarter. And what we do is we discuss everything from financial logistics, operation, planning of a mutual, of a significant countywide event. The changes that were made reflect the current operational practices of O C M O, and it ensures the alignment with the new O C M O bylaws that were established in 2018. Number three is the, and the changes is the Operational Area Coordination Staffing. And this has to do with specifically this, and why there's a sense of urgency to get this thing signed off, even is the staffing, what we're trying to create right now for the, for the pods. So this details how to, how to participate in the mutual aid staffing of a countywide event. And then change number four is the, is addressing the Operational Area Finance. And that's, again, reflects this emergency also in that it details how to, that the Operational Area is, is working with the grant process and defines how, how we're going to put in for reimbursement for the, for everything from the, from the effort to, for the emergency to the staffing reimbursements. And the last one is the addendums. It's taken a lot of the addendums and removed them if they were not pertinent anymore, or it clarifies the roles and responsibilities of, of the addendums. For example, addendum one includes documents that are related to the Administration Emergency Management Assistant Program. That is now part of the body of the Operational Area. And there's also the Operational Mutual Aid Plan. This is the document that becomes, instead of just being an addendum, it also becomes part of the body and identifies how the mutual aid will work specific to a countywide emergency. And I'm open for any questions.
Thank you so much. Is there any question or concerns from member of the city council? City Council? So if not, so may I have a motion? A motion to approve as recommended.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Menzo and second from Councilmember Doe.
Yes, that was a motion made by Councilmember Menzo and seconded by Councilmember Doe to approve as recommended, which is to adopt the revised Orange County Operational Area Agreement as approved by the Orange County Board of Supervisors on May 19, 2020, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the revised Operational Area Agreement. Roll call vote. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Todd?
Yes.
Motion carries 5 to 0.
Did you look, I believe that you have something?
I do. I apologize for not, not indicating this earlier. The, we have withdrawn, or there was a quest from the originator of the items to withdraw items number 5.3. Um, the, we have withdrawn or there was a quest uh from the originator of the items uh to withdraw items number five point three. Which is the issuance of street sweeping citations during the regional stay at home order. And then also withdrawing uh six point three consideration of a potential ordinance to allow outdoor dining with social distancing. So those items uh have been withdrawn for consideration from this agenda.
Thank you. Next item, five point four, late on homeless shelter. So may I have a staff report, city manager?
Yes, good evening, council, um, mayor and council. Uh, this is an item that um, councilmember Ho asked us to bring forward um. To provide an area for you to discuss um just ongoing update on homeless shelter efforts. So I do have several staff available um to answer any questions um that in. Uh, I believe Commander McCormick is there, he will be um heading the homeless task force in the future. And um our homeless liaison officer uh Perez is also available as well as um. Other members of staff, so if you have any questions?
Could I ask them, ask you, how often does our homeless task force meet these days?
So the current task force is is not, um, I don't, I don't believe they've met since they sent their recommendation out. And I do believe we're in the process tonight uh adding to that uh force. So I believe Alexa is um, mine and she can answer that.
Yeah, that's correct, we had um, three of the council appointed members resigned after um completing their duties as directed. So didn't have a a fully staffed task force with five appointees to hold meetings.
Okay. Do a homeless task force? Because they did a a study, right? They have their recommendations the last year, if I remember correctly. And we talk about uh disband that homeless task force until uh we uh need them again, is that correct?
The direction of the council was to um to not disband the task force.
Okay.
However, we did have, as I mentioned, um several resignations from the appointees as well as several of the um people that had joined the task force as um professionals, if you will. We had um people that were involved in um homeless outreach like CityNet, uh American Family Housing and so forth. And um, you know, these groups aren't, they're not members of the community. They were part of the task force to lend their expertise and their assistance. But um, again, they had, you know, come to the conclusion of their duties and also were unable to continue at at the pace we were going.
So any question, any other question or any good thoughts?
Yeah, yeah, I don't know, Councilwoman Ho is finished, but she's, she's finished, I'll go.
Oh, no, I I just have a question, um, would you be able to provide more uh more detail? Breakdown of the hundred and three eighty four homeless. I I know that's a, you know, I I was expecting account and I got that, but I just kinda need a breakdown. And I know recently um, county has uh that new mental, um, what would you call that institute or to support? Some of the um mental homeless, homeless uh people that might be mentally ill or. And I just wanted to know how, whether or not we're taking advantage of that. And if we could have a further breakdown of of that number, um, that would be really helpful. And then um, I think we are appointing, um, I know I will be appointing uh my person for the homeless task force. And I hope that we could pick up where we left off and we just need to to go at it full force. Um, so, so the first question to you is, is there a breakdown? And how you're helping these folks? I don't really get much information from this.
And I'm gonna um ask Officer Perez, do you, are we able to answer those questions?
I think I can, I just need to know what number she's referencing, but what number are you referencing, council member?
Up a hundred and eighty four on the first page. The survey identified a total of a hundred eighty four homeless in Westminster.
Is this the CityNet report that you're talking about?
Yes, we're on five point four, yes.
It's the twenty nineteen point and point in time count.
Oh, that was the actual official one, that was a while back, I believe. Uh, yeah, as for the breakdown as to who they are sitting at and the way the county operates is we're not allowed, you know, they don't have like. You can't uh reference names or anything or any information that actually breaks it down to identify like, you know, how.
I'm not asking that, I definitely am not asking for that.
Okay, maybe I don't understand.
For a number, like let's say I'm expecting like thirty percent, you know, uh, and I I think you've done that before. Um, Sherry, maybe in two thousand nineteen, this is kind of old data. So so it says at that time, uh, January nine, twenty nineteen, point in time count. The survey identified a total of a hundred and eighty four homeless in Westminster. It is now two thousand twenty one. And I know that since June, uh, we were warned by um City of Stanton that. Uh, they are, they are now, um, they they went to Judge Carter and um they provided enough beds for their um homeless. People or the head count. And I know that um, I got a warning from um, you know, from Stanton, the mayor of Stanton said that, you know, they are going to be um. Uh, I guess um, enacting the anti encampment law and um, they were approved by um Judge Carter to do that. And uh then I'm just wondering like, um, are we, I'm expecting or I would think that number might have doubled since. But if we're looking at two thousand nineteen, then we have, we we we're not up to date. So um, could we reassess what exactly how much will we pay CityNet and what are they doing? And whether or not we should, we should review their performance? Just to see if um, they're overwhelmed, they um, we need to in- increase our package or we need to cancel them or something. Are they serving us for our present needs um at this time? Because I know when I first came on board two thousand sixteen, I think we, we um brought them on board on two thousand seventeen. And at that time, I think we might have had like seventy um homeless um people. And so, yes, it doubled since two thousand seventeen, but but that doesn't impress me, which, I mean, I get that number and now what? Could we look into that, please?
Yeah, if I, if I could just respond, because there there are definitely a few moving parts with regards to the point in time count that was conducted in twenty nineteen. Um, when the point in time count is done every, every two years. And again, um, we've had a COVID delay this year. That is a countywide effort, um, it's widespread with a lot of support. Um, and the county is able to provide a greater breakdown, which may be kind of what you're thinking about where, you know, they had a percentage that had been veterans. And a percentage that were families and those sorts of things. Um, so that data only really comes around with that greater point in time count that the county um really takes the lead of. However, CityNet does do point in time counts on a periodic basis. And I'll ask um Officer Perez to jump in if he, if he happens to know when the most recent one is, was done. But they do update them, it's not um. The data is good information, but it's not going to be quite the same as when the point in time count is done by the county. Because of the level of resources and support that that are available through that larger effort that happens every two years. So they they can provide us some information on on their updates. But it um, you know, from what I've seen, it it does fluctuate, you know, the the number overall is trending up, but it'll go up and it'll go down a little bit. Just kind of depending on um, all kinds of influences like, you know, the the weather, how many beds are available, all that sort of stuff. And um, we can certainly look at, look at the CityNet contract. Um, I know the police department would be happy to do that and has done that before. Um, and then I'd also like to share that one of the, you know, great things that came out of the homelessness task force. Was we had invited um county mental health to come and speak to the group. And we were able to engage that group to provide us with additional services. So we do have some additional resources on the street that um were free to us, which is always great to to help to continue to connect to this population. And provide some different resources and outlets. So we have two homeless liaison officers as well as CityNet and county mental health that are all now engaged and and playing a role in the process.
But you know what, back in two thousand seventeen, when they got our uh contract. Uh, that was about the first and the last time they did a point in time count. And that's weird, that that doesn't impress me because they just, they got the contract, they did the count and that's it, they disappeared. So I'm not talking about the one that the county does every two years. But I mean, how do we take pulse of how how we're doing? And you know, I I I would say the, you know, this fluctuate, this number doubled and then probably triple by now or even quadruple. But we're taking a guess and that's it, you know, I I think we just need to know so that uh. Because we need to start our homeless task force again and we need to, I mean, I hear a lot of people are complaining about homelessness. And in order for us to do something, we need to to have an idea of how we're doing and what is that number? What is, what, what is the number? And so what is the point in time count, we shouldn't be waiting for county, we have this number. I never saw county number, but I I know we we did, CityNet did that, that count. So I'm just wondering, um, they did that one time when, was that to impress us? And then after that, that was it, never saw them again, so. Is there anything you could do to help out so that we have a a better status of how things are going? And um, if this, you know, you we hear complaints, a lot of complaints and we see a lot more homeless people. And so for us to even begin to move forward, we just need to have a better idea of what. You know, not to be so exact, but you see how this number from two thousand seventeen until like two years later, we double the number. More than double, I remember the number was seventy something in two thousand seventeen. And so, so in two thousand nineteen, point in time count to a hundred eighty four. And I do feel that it is now six months from the time I got that warning from Stanton. And so, so I believe this number, I I have a hunch that this number has gone up to like almost three hundred. You know, it might have doubled like, you know, so I don't like to guess and I don't think that's the way we should do things. Is there any way you could help me out with that?
Councilman, if you don't mind, um, so regarding CityNet, they do 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 a count uh on the off year. So the official count CityNet runs for the county, but then on the off year, CityNet will do an off count just for us in our city. Um, we did one, we've done one every year, uh, except for we we were going to do the official count um this December, January. But because of COVID, it was canceled by the county. We, the last number we had unofficial during that off year would have been last year and that was around two eighteen. Is what we, what we had.
Alright, uh, uh, looking at the report, and I would thanks our inner room uh, city manager and staff for.
Excuse me, mayor.
Working um, really hard, but I, but I have a question that, you know, I really appreciate that staff came up uh. Uh, with the uh. The recent conversation that uh with City of Stanton regarding this uh matter. But I think that is still like a short term solution. So um, and we all understand that it would take a lot of money if we want to come up with a long term. Uh, solution and um, based on the report. Uh, staff recently applied for four hundred thousand, is that from the state or is that from the federal? And is that like one time funding or is that like annual rent?
So that, that funding we applied for five years, um, it is state money. It does come out of the um, the new tax that's placed on property turnover. So when you sell your home, you you're charged an additional fee. So we did um submit our application, the state has not approved it yet. Um, it's generally considered an over the counter application, so I don't expect it to be denied. But I do know that um, it's just taken them a long time to to work through it. So um, I do expect that we will have that funding available. We put it in for four hundred thousand dollars a year for the five year term.
I appreciate that you've been working with a state of Stanton, I think that's a really, really great news. But uh, can you predict or uh, how many beds that you think that they will able to uh. Uh, work with us or?
I don't know that we could pretty good predict that at at this time. And I don't know if Sherry has had more conversations with them just yet, but I think a lot of it will be contingent upon finding a site. Um, and what what the site can accommodate, um, and certainly how expensive the site is will will be a big determining factor. The the land value is, you know, the the single greatest startup cost.
Thank you. Um, I have a couple of things um that are. I hope that we can get our um homeless list task force up and running as as soon as possible. And I would ask the new members of the homeless task force to really bring something to the table and really work. To support um each other and staff, it's not just depend on staff alone to bring forward ideas. Uh, we need this, need to attack this collectively and the more ideas, the better for the preacher homeless and staff task force. Um, for them, I would want them to look into uh reading off the US Department of HUD and their website as far as um. Some other cities have been using the strategy of shared housing. Uh, to address some of the homeless issues, uh, some of the people who are on the verge of homelessness. Or 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 just recently became homelessness, homeless. And a a shared housing strategy has, they've had studies on that, they show that they've had some. Uh, really good success with that partnering up. It's not just partnering other residents together, but um, there's also uh services from, you know. Full wraparound services and 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 it's putting together a program that would be successful for the and joining people together and and. And having the other um, other services to help them as far as the shared housing strategy. And the other one that I would, if you can, hopefully that um staff remembers is to bring this forward to the. Task forces, the other other cities have used a tiny home model. Where they they purchase tiny homes and uh they're real, really easy to put together. And really easy to clean and sanitize and and they're mobile, they can be moved, been taken apart pretty rapidly. Uh, the city of Redondo Beach has used this this model and they had great success for that. So uh, right now with with this homeless, we, no, no idea is a bad idea. We need to just look at every single aspect and how can we attack this? Um, so that and. And also we need to look at the motel um strategy, can we use like Stanton did in. Maybe we don't need to build a a new homeless shelter, maybe we can convert a motel into a homeless shelter. And have full wraparound services there. At this point, nothing is really off the table. Um, so we need to really hit this and 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 look into all these different um areas that that could possibly help. And and uh, like I said, we know finance is an issue and and I think nothing is off the table. So hopefully, with the new homeless task force can really look at all these different avenues that it can possibly work. So um, thank you.
I I I have a question for staff. Um, yes, uh, I know that before we dissolved um the homelessness uh committee last time. I know that they they've been working really hard and came up with their report or recommendations. Uh, uh, we, did we uh actually uh implement or use any uh recommendation that they have? Uh, you know, uh throughout the time that uh. Uh, we have now, uh, I know that we are going to have a a homelessness uh team today, but you know, I want to. Uh, go back and see where, what they, what their recommendation before, did we do anything with that?
So the primary recommendation was to build a temporary emergency homelessness shelter, so we have not done that. Um, we did add on a second homeless liaison officer, so we now have two HLOs. We were also able to um strengthen some assistance through our home federal grant program. Utilizing um what's called TBRA, tenant based rental assistance. So we are providing some rental assistance in that way to um help families that are facing homelessness or struggling with homelessness. So some actions have indeed been taken.
Alright, thank you.
Mm-hmm, you know, um, I uh, is it, Alexa, you're you're doing a lot.
You know, um, I uh, i- is it Alexa, you're you're doing a lot. I, you're doing a lot. Are you um overwhelmed?
Sorry, I want to help. I have feedback.
So sorry. Um, and I'm just wondering, because we are putting everything, our homelessness. Really is, we got to bring it to the forefront. I think we've been putting it on the back burner. And so um this being January, I think one of my goals is to see if we could um pick up where we left off. Uh, I know that uh the mayor of Stanton is really excited about working with us. And is there any any way we, and I think um um we could have a meeting with him? You know, one of our council members will meet with him. I would be willing to meet with him. And so if he's willing to to, you know, I I know he knows a lot about, he actually uh spearhead the homeless homelessness um in Stanton. And so I believe um he's very anxious to, he's not gonna send someone, he's gonna come and meet with us himself. Um, in 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 I know that uh you wrote here that uh you tried to purchase beds and um from Garden Grove, Fullerton and Buena Park. I know Garden Grove is out. I know they haven't returned your calls. And I know they you've tried and you pursued them and we even talked about maybe partnering with them. So they're off the table. If they don't reply, then then they that maybe maybe the homeless homelessness is not uh a priority for them. So um, let's just see what Stanton has done. And how we could uh learn from, learn from them and see how we could partner as well. So could we do that? Arrange for a meeting? And then if we could find out, I know that uh, you know, you talk about Fullerton and Brea not returning your calls. Or that's what happened last year, but is there any way we could pick up where we left off? I know um Mayor Schaber has mentioned that he purchased beds from Fullerton and Brea. Um, and um I I'm curious of knowing, I want to know how much per bed. And I want to know um where where's, um, so with the fund that we have now. You know, I'd like to know how many beds we can uh start getting and um what our plans are. So if we can just start with that meeting, that would be great. Would that be okay? Like to see if staff could put together, just uh see if we can get a meeting together with Stanton.
Yes, we can absolutely reach out to um Mayor Shaver and arrange that meeting.
Thank you.
I actually, I actually did receive a call and I have not gotten been able to get back to um the um city manager from Garden Grove. So they did reach back out to us and I can come back and let you know what they what they reported.
Thank you, thank you. Okay.
Alright, any other question or concerns for this item? If not, we need a motion to receive and file the report.
I'd like to make that motion to receive and file.
I'll second it. Alright.
That was a motion made by council member Ho, seconded by council member Manzo, and that's to receive and file the report. Roll call vote, council member Doe.
Yes.
Council member Ho.
Yeah.
Council member Manzo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
I am, yes, I heard the sound of smoke detector from uh some of the government will house or the staff office, or I don't know.
I apologize, that's my house. It just went off. It only started today. So um I'm gonna get this fixed, but it's not gonna be fixed tonight. So I'm I'm trying to mute and only turn it on only if I need to speak.
I cannot unheard.
I'm sorry.
Alright. Alright, uh, so let's see. Next item, urgency item. So, but I don't know, is that?
Oh, my gosh, I have to unmute. Alright, sorry about that. So um, okay. So basically, this is item five point five. Thank you so much for uh hearing me today. This is my goal for this particular item is to bring support and promote Westminster businesses by providing additional retail retailing opportunities. And so basically, as I said, um there's, I I heard that there's money and we want to get there first. Uh, this is from District One and uh it's, of course, I think they have um uh District One consists of four different cities. So, you know, first come, first served, and we want to make sure we uh see if we could uh do something uh like this. So the plan and the concept of the plan um is that we develop sites. Temporary infrastructure and a program to facilitate an outdoor dining and vending experience for our our Westminster businesses to grow their sales and to reach a broader audience. So the program would be designed to highlight as many local restaurants and businesses as reasonably possible. This program will seek up um to provide opportunities for businesses in different parts of our city to highlight themselves. Utilize all available funding from the county supervisor office um or that whatever we're able to get to create pockets of activity that feature restaurants, retailers, service providers in an outdoor environment. Support public health efforts uh through vendor spacing, sanitation, et cetera. So basically, the next step we, you know, we would like to direct staff to do would be to identify a location or locations in the city that can accommodate outdoor tents and or pergola structures, uh seating, mobile kitchen units, restrooms as needed in in an um in any feasible combination. If more than one location is selected, different sites may have different facilities. Determine viability of sites, including input from OCFA and county health. Seek opportunities to incorporate lighting, signage, and design features to enhance the experience depending upon the cost. Develop cost estimates, including equipment rental, security measures, management utilities, et cetera. And develop a program for vendor uh selection. Uh, such as um a tentative structure would be must be located in Westminster, have an active business license and seller's permit if applicable. Vendors vendors will be prioritized to accommodate those with brick and mortar uh locations, uh because we were trying to help the ones with uh because the brick and mortars will probably have the most financial burden because they have to spend money on 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 renting, on rent and et cetera, um utilities. However, those that live in Westminster and have online or craft businesses will have opportunities to participate at a lower priority level. Vendors will fill out an application, provide a recent tax return to verify status and agree to contract contractual terms of operation. So city staff or selected contractor will review and process these applications, assigning spaces and times to vendors. Though it will depend on interest, it it is expected that vendors will rotate to share the benefit uh of the exposure. Considering working with SCORE, SBA, SBDC, or similar organization on a short crash course or business coaching that is offered to or required of participants. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Ho, for your report and any question or concerns from any other council member.
I have a question, councilwoman Ho. Um, do you know um how long these are up for, like the duration that they that they would be up for?
Um, um, these are, you know, I'm thinking that if um depends on our funds, uh our funding and how much money um we're talking about that we'll be getting. So that's that's still up in the air. But I'm proposing that's gonna be like a six month at a time. So it's not like a carnival where you just set up for the weekend. But remember, we're trying to revive the business. We're trying to give them exposure. We're trying to, you know, put people in the mood to spend money to to stimulate the economy.
Do you know, do you know if there's some, if somebody else has done this already, or they're on the verge of doing it?
No, I don't. But you know, I mean, it's very similar to um you know, people actually, for instance, I don't know if um anybody else would have some examples of what I'm, what I described earlier.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I've seen where they have those um like a food market, like like on a weekend where there's a like a bunch of food vendors and, you know, everybody has the option of of different kind of food to go. And it's kind of like, remember, we used to have the Taste of Westminster many years ago?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Kind of similar to that, which was a pretty a pretty nice event.
Um, but yeah, but it's not a week, it's not a weekend. Yeah, but it's it's, you know, something that's very festive. It really gets people um from their home, you know, to go outside and and uh, you know, it gives um the small businesses the exposure they need. Um, and and remember, we truly, truly want to expose the ones with the brick and mortar uh stores and not, we're not trying to you know, uh, create like an atmosphere and then give um priority to people who have internet type of businesses or home businesses. Because those people really operate at a very, very low cost to no cost at all. So I think our business, like brick and mortar stores really need help. And this is the reason for this proposal. But again, this is direction to staff. We don't know we have the money. We don't know how much money. And so this is like, you know, giving them all this direction at one time. If you agree with me, you love this freedom, and then they get moving with their um with their research.
Yeah, I'll second it. It sounds like a good idea.
If um, let me just interject real quickly. Uh, just by way of example, I know a lot of cities are doing a lot of different things. Um, this one sounds a little bit more involved. I do know in Placentia, they have a downtown area that's uh quite old and uh, they're trying to revitalize it. So I know that the city did uh do something similar to this where they basically closed off a street um for one block in that old downtown area. And there's a number of restaurants in that area and they, the city basically helped to provide um that street area, um outfitted it with tables and put lighting across the street overhead to give it a real ambiance. Um, but in a sense, it was helping those number of restaurants in that area. And it's also become a very attractive place to now go. So it's drawing people in, helping the businesses. So that's just one example. I'm I'm sure other cities are doing different things. Um, in that case, I want to say the city spent about fifty thousand dollars to make those improvements. But they felt that that was important, not only to help those businesses, but also to help revitalize that area. So that's just one example you could probably look into. I'm sure other cities have done other things.
Yeah, and the other thing is that it really um, we we need staff to uh, we need to direct staff so that they can start doing some work, some research. Uh, such as portable kitchens. I mean, if we're gonna have restaurants, we want to make sure we have um um sanitary, that you know, make sure that we 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 pass um, well, um, OC Health. Was that called uh Division? Um, and also, we want to make sure we find out how much it costs to get these portable kitchens and make sure we we get it done right. You know, and make sure we um, you know, keep in mind, you know, safety and health uh of the community comes first. So we are just directing staff to see what's out there, what can we do, how much it's it's gonna cost. And what kind of money we can get. But I know we can get some money there.
So basically, uh, the motion that make by council member Ho to explore the possibility of uh helping the business, right? Oh, vice mayor.
Yes, can I have a question for um uh council member Ho?
Yes.
Um, yes, um, I I know that you mentioned that this money is from the uh from the county and then the for for the district one. And you also mentioned that it is going to be first come, first served. So what is the timeframe that you are looking for, you know, if we direct the staff to to look into it? Uh, I guess that first of all, that we need to know the amount of money that we seeking for. Uh, you know, if we don't know the the, you know, uh, the, you know, we have to have a a an estimate of number. Secondly, that we need to know the timeframe so that, you know, staff know uh when to get this one done. And so that we can submit it in time to uh to get the money. Uh, those are my two concerns.
Okay, so the first concern is, you know, I heard that there's gonna be um something in the tune of about two million two million dollars, and I I believe there are four different cities. Uh, and uh so basically, if we bring a proposal or if we know exactly how much money um, uh, you know, and if we're the first to turn in our proposal, I suppose we would get the the bigger share. Um, versus turning it in late or coming up with an idea uh and propose uh an idea too late. Uh, so I think staff could easily find out by just placing a call. Uh, secondly, well, you know, this was going to wait, but because um, you know, the governor lifted that order, the stay home order. And so this is the reason why it's a rush. So I think that uh it would be done um, you know, as quickly as possible. But then you'll get more information when you call, when our staff calls over to county uh office. So does that answer your question?
And I, and let me add to that. I I think um what staff would be doing would be looking into what it might cost to to set these up. So I think uh Alexa and her team will be examining, you know, what would it cost to have resting facilities or a portable kitchen or various configurations. Uh, and then come back with those costs, and you guys would approve that it, once we have those numbers and what the county would make available.
I agree.
Alright, any other question from uh member of the city council? If not, we have a motion and second on the floor.
Sorry, I didn't catch the second.
That was me.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you, sir. Alright, and that was to direct staff to explore the feasibility. Uh, it's a roll call vote. Council member Doe.
Yes.
Council member Ho.
Yes.
Council member Manzo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
Next item, provision to residency verification process for city commission, board, and committees. City club?
Yes, sir. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you. So back in December two thousand sixteen, the council approved a process for verifying uh residency requirements or residency rather for applications of uh city commissions, boards, and um committees. In that case, um, prior to two thousand sixteen, it was on the honor system um as far as, you know, residents applying. With this process that was approved, um applicants must submit a copy of their driver's license, a utility bill. And staff was required to contact the County of Orange Register Voter's Office to verify um their address. Uh, that being said, um, in two thousand nineteen, we also added a requirement for applicants to submit a signed uh code of ethics statement. So uh youth committee members don't follow that same process because they are minors. And so um they have a different, you know, process of of, you know, qualifying for the committee. Well, we've been using this process since two thousand sixteen or so. And um there have been a few concerns that have been raised regarding inconsistencies between the process that we currently um, you know, use and just the bylaws that are um, you know, for for each of the committees. Uh, that being said, the the bylaws require that commission uh, you know, commissioners, committee members, board members uh must be Westminster residents uh with a couple of exceptions. And our process is that we, you know, we um, we go through the ROV's office to verify those addresses that they've provided. The problem that lies there is you could be a resident, but if you're not a registered voter, I would not be able to verify that, you know, that that's that's your um, that's your address or that you're a resident. So that's been an issue. We actually have one, um, you know, we have one applicant this time around who, you know, for whatever circumstances is a resident, can prove that, you know, that she lives here, but um is ineligible to uh register um at this time. And so, you know, that's that's where there's a dilemma there. That's, so that's something that, you know, we'd like to You know, that's, that's where there's a dilemma there. Um, that's, so that's something that, you know, we'd like to um. To fill that loophole. The other issue that we've had um is that. Some applicants have struggled with providing utility bills. So, um, you know, some of the. Either some of the younger residents or those living, you know, in a multifamily household, et cetera, they don't have their utility bills. Uh, utility accounts such as electric, gas, phone, water, um, they're not under their names. And alternatively. You know, we've, um, we've administratively allowed people to submit other bills that show their addresses such as. An insurance bill or they've turned in a credit card bill or, you know, a credit card statement or a rent invoice, a pay stub. Um, just something with their address. And so we wanted to um, address that and perhaps expand uh what, you know, what we accept as, as a document that's um acceptable. And then, um, so essentially what staff is requesting, um, in the spirit of encouraging just civic participation. And streamlining the application process, looking at the residency requirement versus a registered voter requirement. Cities out there do make it a requirement that you're a registered voter. There are cities out there. You know, neighbor, neighbor city Garden Grove has that requirement. Um, so if council would like to make voter registration a requirement. Staff is asking that council provide that direction and we will return at a future meeting to amend the bylaws. For the commissions and committees. Um, and so that would change that requirement. Um, that would also be consistent with, you know, us using the ROV to verify. If council does not wish to make voter registration a requirement, staff is requesting. That the submission of a driver's license or ID card and perhaps one or more additional documents such as. A utility bill, rent statement, um, something like that over a period of time such as. You know, three months, thirty days, um, that that would be an alternative method of um, of proving residency. Uh, we'd also like that, you know, driver's license be changed from driver's license to driver's license or state issued identification card. Because not everybody has a driver's license. And then, of course, change utility bill to include other bills such as. Rent invoices statements or other documents that indicate uh name and address. Uh, whatever changes, um, if you do make a change tonight, um, it doesn't affect the current recruitment that will be, you know, speaking to an item seven point one. Because we have gone through to verify all of those um, addresses with the ROV. Um, the only, the only exception, the only issue that would be is you do have a. Um, you do have an applicant who is not a registered voter, but is a resident. And based on the current. Uh, process that we have, that person wouldn't necessarily qualify based on the fact that I could not verify that person's voter registration record. Because she's not a registered voter. So if you have any questions, be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you for your report. We appreciate that. Pretty detailed from our city club. Any, any western concerns from. Member of the city council?
Uh, yes, mayor, thank you. Um, thank you, Christine, for that report. It was really, did a really good job. I think I want to suggest that we need to have, uh, for sure, more than one document that shows. Residency. And I agree that we should have um, either a state driver's license or a state ID card. I didn't, I do not feel with the, you know, trying to. Attract more civic duty, I, I think that it's, it's perfectly fine that they're not a registered voter. But definitely, definitely a Westminster resident. But we need to have more than one document that shows that there are a Westminster resident. That's my view.
I have a question for our city clerk. So when you verify all, all the candidate who apply for. Different position of commission and committee. Uh, how many document that you ask them, like driver license and utility bill? Uh, or any other?
So the only thing that we're, that we do ask for and they provide it to us when they provide us a completed application, um, that's given. Uh, we do ask for a copy of the driver's license. We ask for a copy of the utility bill and again, um, people. Who have applied, who, who don't have utility bills have expressed that. And so if I've accepted some kind of form. Some other bill that has their name and address listed. The, you know, unfortunately, I don't know if there were applicants that, you know, tho- if there were people who are interested in applying. That simply just did not apply because they either didn't have a driver's license or didn't have a utility bill. So unfortunately, I would not have known that. Um, but you know, those are, those are the two documents that we uh require. That shows their address and we, we match it, we try to, we match it with the application. We did have one instance with a, with an applicant who was a registered voter at a residence. But the driver's license showed their business address that was listed in Westminster and, you know, that's a DMV issue. That is a DMV issue, but, um, but she was also able to provide a, a utility bill. In, you know, in her name with her residential address. So, you know, that being said, that, you know, that pushed through. But there's a few loopholes there.
Well, basically, you're asking for the ROV, uh.
Yes.
Process based on this item, am I correct?
Well, so we, we currently, we currently um, verify, we look at the driver's license, we provide that information, name and address and. Uh, to the ROV's office when we call them and they let us know when, um, you know, when that person. Was registered here, um, and then also that that is a confirmed, um, you know, name and address. Um, and so if there's, if there's anything that's, um, you know, that doesn't match, uh, we do let the applicant know, but we do that. Uh, with the intent that it fulfills the residency requirement, you know, going through the ROV because that's really the only. That's really the only way that, you know, we can prove a residency. There are other alternative ways to do that. Um, you know, again, if they submitted multiple documents over a period of. Time that's, uh, that's current, that's also a way that we can prove residency for those who are not registered voters.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, um, I strongly uh recommend that, uh, that, uh, you know. To in order to serve in City Westminster in, you know, the person need to be resident here in City of Westminster. And uh, you know, I, I strongly uh urge uh staff to verify. Um, you know, the res- residency uh of the applicant. Uh, however, I was, uh, you know, I think that, uh, you know, require them uh to vote, uh, to register to vote. Uh, in order for them to serve uh in any committee here in, in the City of Westminster. I don't think that it necessary. The reason I said that is because I think voter rights is, is, it's, you know, uh, everybody have the, 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 the voter rights. So, you know, they, they decide to register to vote or they decide not to vote, but that doesn't hinge them from. Um, you know, serving uh the community, especially these are volunteers to, to, to serve. As you mentioned, that is, is, you know, uh, uh, we advocate to, to, you know, civic uh involvement. When I say that we strongly uh urge uh the staff to verify the residency, you know, uh, I know that utility bill. You know, it's difficult to, 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 you know, for, to make it a requirement because. You know, utility bill, if you live in the house, there's only one person, uh, you know, uh, you know, uh, having their name on it. So what, uh, what about the other person? So by that, you can, you can use all the bills, uh, you know, um, to your assessment. So that we can verify the resident- residency. So that's my comment.
Okay.
Um. And I'm a city clerk. So you are in the trenches. You are the one who's doing all the verification. Okay, um, what do you need to? What do you need, what is your recommendation suggestion to make your life easier? Okay, ROV registration, it doesn't take that um complicated, I mean, you know, anybody can register to vote. Okay, but the thing I, I, I have, they vote in the last election. Okay, so anybody can go into ROV, register vote, and then when you call and check ROVs there. I mean, it's very simple. If they want to cheat, I mean, that's, that's the easiest way, but I don't think anybody really wanna, wanna go out their way in doing that, but. You are in the trenches. What is your recommendation? What would you like us to authorize you to do? Or rewrite in the policy? So that you can, number one, have a clear direction. Number two is, it's fair for everybody. Uh, you know, you, uh, at least you have a guideline so that you can show people to say, you know, this is a guideline that I was authorized by the city council to do. Uh, it's verifiable, but at the same time, you know exactly what you need and so that we can. Approve it.
Well, given the fact that we, so we don't receive. A lot of applications in certain areas of our, you know, for our commissions, committees, um, et cetera, that. The interest is in whether it's, you know, whether it's interest or it's. The fact that, you know, we require the utility bill, driver's license, um, we do have a low uh return rate of applicants. Uh, that being said, um, I definitely, again, on the driver's license portion, driver's license or. State, uh, state issue ID card, anyone can get a state issue ID card if you don't know how to drive. The second part of that, um, with the utility bill, just, you know, if you don't have a utility bill, just. A bill that has your name and address. Um, and I would say over a period of time, so I would say three months worth. In addition, and this is where, this is where, this is a, a, a polydis- policy decision that needs to be made, but. I would recommend that you have, you don't require that it's, that the person is a registered voter. Um, because again, you have circumstances where people are residents, but not voters, and those are two separate things. I will still check with the Register Voter's Office regarding, you know, the residency, if they are the registered voters. But, um, I would request that you allow, um, someone who is not a registered voter. To provide alternative documentation, which would be in the form of, you know. Three bills or one bill over three months or, you know, um. Multiple bills over multiple months, but something along those, you know, along those lines, uh, that establish that they've lived, that they are a resident here.
If that will make.
Christine, oh, sorry.
Yes.
Have you been writing all those down?
Me?
Yes.
Oh, they're in my head.
Okay.
No, I, 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 I guess you did. I guess you did. That's, that's my follow up question.
Yes.
That's my follow up question. I know that, yeah, from the staff report, you have it in bold. Change driver license to driver license, uh, state issued identification card and also change utility bill to include. All the bills such as rent invoice, uh, invoices, statement and other documentation. I think those are the thing that you, you want us to. Uh, to, you recommend us to, to, to change, right?
Yes, absolutely. I, I, you know, I have my recommendations. Obviously, it's at the discretion of the city council. Um, you know, there are cities that make it a requirement for voter registration, um, you know, requirement. But again, um, just to increase civic participation, um, if you allow me to have an alternative method. Or uh to prove a residence residency, um, then, you know, then I, I just need your approval for that.
So I just, I just want to follow up that, you know, we appreciate you, uh, what you did there and I just want to confirm that, yes, you did right now. Um, you know, on the, on the staff report.
Um. So if, if we, uh, if we, uh, uh, vote on this, are you gonna come back with the actual policy? The list is all with all that for the final approval or just, just this and?
No, so the, the original policy that was adopted was simply by minute order. So a formal council policy doesn't exist. Except for within the minutes. Um, so that being said, if you, um, you know, any amendments or, um, you know, whatever you approve tonight. Uh, can be put in as a minute order, but certainly, you know, I, I plan on putting it as an official, as a, as a council policy. But, um, you know, you, you don't, I don't have to come back with it.
Okay, um, you know, if there's no more questions from the council, I move to approve, uh, your recommendation. With the change of.
Okay, and just to.
I second that.
Can I, yeah, I, I'm in favor too. Can I make sure that Christine that? So those documents. If they bring you multiple documents, we need to make sure that those multiple documents have the same, same address.
Yes, absolutely. And that's, um, you know, and that's where the documents that were not utility bills. Uh, people were providing things um that had their address on him. Uh, so again, they came up with stuff like an insurance bill or a credit card. Statement and, um, you know, uh, I had a rent invoice, someone gave a pay stub. Um, which of course, uh, for, you know, members of the public to be aware of, those documents that are provided such as the driver's license, ID cards. Uh, and bills, those are exempt from public disclosure. So we don't, we don't send any of that out, so.
And, and, and now make sure we have the three month uh timeframe in there as well.
Okay, so three month timeframe would be, okay, so does the maker of the motion and the secondar agree with that three month timeframe? Of um, documents?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so just to recap that motion, it's to change, to make the following revisions, um. Which is to check voter registration and if the person's not a registered voter to allow them to provide. Um, three documents over a period of three months to, oh, to um, establish or to prove residency. Change driver's license to driver's license or state issued identification card. And then to change utility bill to include other bills such as rent invoices, statements or other documents that indicate their name and address.
Uh, question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, since we just added three months, verified three months, uh, utility bill or whatever, the, the proof of residency. Is that person need to, uh, have to be live in the city of, of Westminster for the three month in order to qualify for the, uh, committee? Is that, is that the case or?
Yes, that's, that's true. That, that would, that would establish, um, a resident, a lot, residency in this case.
So, so, so the person must live in the city of. Three months before they can, they can, uh, you know, whatever the, the committee that they claim, uh, for.
Yes.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second on the floor.
Okay. Uh, councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much.
Our next item, six point two, review of ordinance number two, five, six, five. Relating to a temporary moratorium on evicting tenants. May have staff report.
Yes, I, I think I'm gonna handle this one. Um, let me just say at the outset, uh, mayor and council, this, this does not have anything to do with residential eviction. Protections at all. Uh, the reason being is that, uh, although we did deal with that earlier in the year. Um, that has been taken away from the city. The city does not have the right to, uh, to do any residential eviction protections. Um, so what we're talking about right now is just commercial eviction protections. Now, I just want that to be clear because I know that there's some, uh, questions about that, maybe for people who are listening. So, uh, the background is, is that back in, uh, March, February, March, the governor issued some, uh, executive orders. One, of course, being the declaration of emergency, but one of his follow up orders was to, through his executive power. To eliminate protections or state law restrictions on the ability of cities to grant. Um, uh, protection for eviction, both for residential and commercial. And so at that time, uh, most cities, maybe all cities. Uh, issued, uh, orders on their own, uh, to grant protections to both residential and commercial. Some cities set termination dates. And that, you know, these are good up until X date and then they terminated. Many cities ti- as, including Westminster, tied the termination date of their order to the governor's. Order. And so, uh, that has been the case with. order. And so, uh, that has been the case with Westminster, and the governor has subsequently extended his executive order a couple, a couple times. So currently, with respect to that order, in September, he extended it out, uh, until March thirty first. So right now, as things stand, absent anything else, both residential and commercial were extended out till March thirty first. However, in September, the legislature acknowledged the fact that, uh, it's not good to have all these different rules in all these different cities, that, but with respect to residential eviction protection. So they said, you know, we're gonna take charge of this. They passed AB thirty eighty eight. And that basically said, no more cities, we're setting a rule, and, and for residuals, uh, you cannot evict someone, uh, up until, and up and through January thirty first. So that's the current rule with residential. Let me just say with residential, right now, the legislature is looking to extend that, and there are a couple bills, uh, looking to extend it up through June thirtieth. So that's completely under the legislature's control. All that being said, what we're, what we still need to look at is this issue of commercial eviction protection. As I said, ours is tied to the governor's order, which currently goes up through March thirty first. My guess is, there's a good chance that might get extended again, and again, the way our ordinance is drafted, it's tied to the governor's order. Uh, again, other cities don't have it tied to the governor's order. They've either terminated it already, um, or they have other dates, other dates set. So the question before you tonight is merely, do you wanna do anything different? Um, you could do nothing at this point, and in which case, as currently written, it will terminate as of the commercial eviction protections would terminate on, uh, after March thirty first. Or you could give me direction to draft an ordinance that would modify that date, maybe set a date where it terminates. Um, and so those, those are the options for you to discuss and consider tonight. And, and if you do set a date, I will draft one and come and bring it back at the next meeting for you to adopt.
Thank you, uh, city attorney, for your detailed, uh, presentation. We appreciate that. Vice mayor?
Uh, yes, I, I, I know that, uh, some of our city, like, uh, the deputy, uh, city, um, attorney said that, you know, some of the city doesn't have tie, have it tied to the, um, the governor's, uh, order. And, uh, you know, at the time that we make decision to tie that in, uh, with the governors, and because of that, you know, be, it's been extended, uh, you know, uh, this couple times already, and the potential is going to be extended again. And I know that it's, um, it's heard. I know, I, I fully understand the situation that the, the tenants are in, but if they kept doing this, then, uh, you know, the, the landlord um, may also have the problem with that. Uh, so I, 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 you know, I know that the deadline is, uh, uh, to March thirty first, uh, twenty twenty first. Um, I would like to do something same as the other city, that we are gonna set up the date, uh, the termination date, and, uh, my recommendation is to set it up for February twenty eighth of twenty twenty one. And that's my motion, if, if there's no, um, comments.
All right, I, uh, seconded motion, and, uh, city attorney, uh, can you drop that ordinance? Uh, do we have to approve the ordinance in, in the next meeting?
Yes, I would have to, uh, draft an ordinance and bring it back.
And after the ordinance is approved, that, so it's still like, like, have another, another thirty days?
No, it's an urgency ordinance.
Okay.
Uh, the original ordinance was an urgency ordinance, and this would be as well. Again, it would be, in a sense, extending the commercial protections until the twenty eighth, at which point they would terminate.
Because, you know, like, are the regular ordinance, we have to wait for, like, second, uh, approval, second reading and another, another thirty days, but I really appreciate that. So we have the motion and second on the floor.
Uh, I have a question.
Yeah, please.
So, so commercial, um, if we lift, um, the commercial, um, moratorium uh, for eviction, um, does that mean they start paying, starting March, or do they have to catch up on their pay by February twenty eighth? How do you?
I don't. Yeah, I don't believe we had any provisions on, on, basically, what we did was we suspended the ability to file an eviction. And the, i- if that's not in place, then the normal rules would apply. If someone's not up to date, then a landlord could seek to follow the legal process uh, related to an eviction.
Well, I don't know about, um, just changing it to, uh, February twenty eighth. I know you have a first and a second, so if you wanna vote, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I, I don't know what the urgency is for one month. It's only one month difference, right? For, from the thirty first of March to the twenty eighth. So, uh, um, go ahead and, go ahead. Vice mayor?
May, may, I may answer that. It's not an urgency, but this, uh, if we do the, we set up the termination date, let's say that the, um, the governor extended to June or to whatever month later on, this will not take effect. Am I correct, uh, deputy, uh, city manager, I mean, city attorney?
Yes, if the governor extends it again for commercial, uh, then the way ours is written, it would continue the commercial eviction protections to whatever date, um, based on the way it's written. So you don't have to do that. You could set a date or, or, or change the language as to when it would end. So you could, you could change it to read that it terminates on March thirty first, at which point, yes, it would go to the March thirty first, and it would not get extended, even if the governor extended it.
Vice mayor? Why don't you do that?
Yes, I, I, I think it is very clear, um, you know, basically, we are not going to allow it, uh, you know, our, uh, ordinance to continue, uh, with the, with the governor order, which is, you know, whatever the extension is. We just comply with whatever that he set out the expiration date, which is, uh, March thirty first. Is it March thirty first?
What is your motion?
March, March first. My motion is to, um, to set a termination date to Feb- uh, February twenty eighth.
Okay. And you want, basically, that you want to keep your original motion to
Yes.
That the day is February twenty eighth. Am I correct?
Uh, you are correct. If, if, you know, I, I, I'd like to set it up that, that way, you know, so that, you know, um, we can terminate on, on February twenty eighth. If there is a problem with that, with, you know, you, if you, uh, if anybody wants to, to have, uh, it's expire on the date that, uh, the current date that's set by, uh, uh, the governor, which is March thirty first, uh, it will take another month. It will take another month. And I know at this point here, um, you know, the, the landlords, I, I got, uh, I being, I was approached by some of their landlord, um, commercial landlord, and they, they expressed their concern that, you know, they, they've been, uh, you know, going out without any, uh, rent money or lease money, and so they are really wants to, to make sure that we are not, number one, they want to make sure that we are not uh, going to allow, allow that it's going to be tied up with the governors if there's any extension. Number two, if they want to, they want to terminate as soon as possible. But I, I think that, you know, to compromise, uh, you know, between the March thirty first and, and now, I think February twenty eighth is, is a good date.
All right, so we have the, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Yes, sir. Yes, motion made by Vice Mayor Nguyen, seconded by Mayor Tom. Roll call vote. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
No.
Councilmember Manzo?
No.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Tom?
Yes.
Okay, that motion that carried three to two with council member Ho and council member Manzo voting no.
Yeah, let me just, let me just clarify that I will draft the ordinance, and that will be on the next agenda.
Okay, all right. Next, we have commission and committee items. Seven point one, appointments to city board and commission. So basically, the city council, we have two appoint, uh, different city board and commission every two years, and I remember last time that, uh, city clerk, uh, she called every, uh, member of the city council along with the, uh, city board and commission. And the city council will approve the whole slate. So I want to do the same at this time. City clerk?
Yes, sir. So just briefly, a brief report on this, where we are appointing to various city boards, commissions and committees. These terms are for two-year terms, with the exception of the homelessness task force, so we have a couple of vacancies there. Um, and those terms expire upon the disbandment of the committee. So generally, what we do is, um, you know, you will each select, uh, your member that you would like to appoint, and we go through the entire roster for all the commissions and committees, and we make one motion at the end. Uh, so what I'll do this time around, instead of jumping from person to person for each committee, I'm gonna call on each of you to, um, to give me the slate of everyone that you would like to appoint. If there are certain seats, uh, you'd like to defer, then, um, it will defer to the next meeting or so. And then, uh, for, again, stated for commission on aging, we had, uh, we had a couple of applicants, um, on commission on aging, and, um, not enough to fill all the vacancies. Um, one of them, you know, we had addressed in the previous item, that is a resident but not currently a registered voter, so if you do decide to appoint, um, to appoint her, we will, uh, use the process that was just approved and, you know, obtain additional documents to prove residency. So it'll be, her appointment will be contingent. That being said, uh, council member Doe. Oh, you're muted.
Is that for aging?
I'm sorry?
Is that for planning or aging?
For which? Aging, the commission on aging. That was just, there was one that will be contingent if you do appoint her.
Okay, first of all, I wanna thanks, uh, the commissioner who served on the planning, commission the past few years. And, uh, this year, I would like to, uh, reappoint with him for the, uh, planning commissioners, uh, Mike White, the traffic commission. Uh, Terry Nguyen for parking wreck.
Hold on, hold on a second, sorry. Terry. Traffic commission was Mike White, okay? Sorry, I've gotta write all this down, so. Okay, go ahead.
Um, parking wreck, community service and, uh, wreck, uh, Terry Nguyen. I'm gonna defer my, uh, commission on, uh, aging until the next meeting. And, uh, the personnel board?
For the personnel board, um, you, so you don't each, you don't each get a member assigned to it, so it'll be, uh, you'll have to discuss if, if you have, uh, someone that you'd like to recommend, um, there for various categories. So, um, unfortunately, for the personnel board, we did not have a, we didn't have, um, someone in the education or education or religious category apply, but we do have um, interest for the at-large member.
So what does that mean?
So you can, um, you can, you can make a suggestion for it, um, if any of the other council
Recommend Anna Wells.
In a for which category? For at-large or?
At-large.
At-large. Oh, what was, what was the name?
Anna, A-N-N-A, last name Wells, W-E-L-S.
Okay, Anna Wells, uh, we did not receive an application for her for that particular one, but, um, contingent upon, if you do make that appointment, it'll be contingent upon us, um, reaching out to her and verifying.
She, she, yeah, she, she, uh, she applied for other positions.
Uh, okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, council member Ho.
Okay, so for commission on aging, I will keep, uh, reappoint Lou Stewart. Stewart. Don't think applied. Oh, you mean they have to reapply?
They, yeah, they do have to reapply, um, and they were contacted, um, they were contacted to, um, you know, to let them know that they have to reapply, um, if they're interested. We actually did have quite a few who were not interested in, you know, being reappointed, but, um, if you'd like, you could defer that one, and we can reach out to Mr. Stewart again.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so we'll defer it, and then we can reach out again to, let me know, you, you're interested in appointing them, but, you know, we'll, we'll see if they're interested.
For planning commission, uh, I'm gonna reappoint Mark Lynn.
Okay.
For traffic commission, uh, reappoint Khan Lynn.
Okay.
For the homeless task force, I'd like to appoint Jody Boy.
Okay. And then, did you have any recommendations for personnel board?
Not at the time.
All right, council member Manzo.
Um, for, I'll start with commission on aging, with Susan Gilby. Uh, for planning, uh, Dawn Anderson.
Anderson.
For traffic, Claudia Steinmetz. For community service and rec, Jamison Power. And for my homelessness, um, I need to defer my homelessness.
Okay. Not a problem. All right, uh, vice mayor Nguyen.
For commission on aging, uh, I'd like to reappoint, uh, Pamela Robinson. And for s- community services and rec, uh, I'd like to appoint, uh, Jason Gray. For the personnel board, uh, I think that, you know, um, we have only one applicant at large. And right now, we are replacing at large, so I recommend that all, you know, uh, um, all, uh, councils consider Susie Elliott for, uh, at large. For planning commission, I'd like to, uh, reappoint, uh, Weston Seed. And for traffic commission, I'd like to appoint Ji-Hung. For homelessness, uh, task force, I'd like to defer to the next.
Okay. See, for Ji-Hung for traffic, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then, uh, council member Ho, um, I missed community services and recreation for you.
I thought so. Um, okay. Uh, yes, for community services and rec, um, I would like to appoint Khan Lynn.
Okay.
Christine, can I go back?
Of course.
For my homelessness task force, um, we have an applicant there, Patty Lee. we have an applicant there, Patty Lemus.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, and then Mayor Tom.
Yes, for aging, commission, I'd like to defer. For planning commission, I'd like to reappoint Yao Nguyen. Nguyen Yao Nguyen. Traffic commission, I'd like to report Nam Quan Nguyen. Who is my community service and rec? I forgot.
Let me look real quick.
I think I see Khan Nguyen. Do you want him? I just.
Yes, it was Khan.
So if council member Ho already appoint him, so I have to defer, but.
You, you can defer, you can pick from one of the other applicants.
I'd like to defer.
Like to defer, okay.
Yes. Because council member Ho already appoint, right? Can wait for, for council member Ho, traffic and landing, oh, and rec, right? Am I right?
For, for planning, you already got planning. Community services, recreation. You're deferring commission on aging, you have traffic. So that's it for your appointees. Do you have any recommendations for?
Council member Ho, just make sure council member Ho already appoint Ken Nguyen, right?
Yes, she did.
Community service and rec, am I right?
Yes.
Okay, so I, so I defer in, in the future meeting.
Okay, and then see what else there is. So right now, council member Doe has made a suggestion for Anna Wells for the personnel board. And then there's a suggestion for Susie Elliott for the personnel board. There's one at-large member seat, there are two alternate member seats. So you'll just have to decide amongst yourselves which one you want to appoint where.
We have, like I said, that, you know, Julia Elliott apply for that position, and only her apply for that position at this point. So I, you know, I would think that it is best to have her at, at large, and then if there is any other candidate wants to, you know, to apply for alternate, then we can consider it later.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Anna Wells can become the alternate.
Okay, well, we can, we can reach out to Ms. Wells to see if she'll be interested in serving as the first alternate on the personnel board. Okay.
All right, so I move ask recommended.
Okay.
For host slate.
I second it. I second it.
Thank you. So let me go through the, what we have so far. So commission on aging. Mayor Ta, council member Doe will defer, and then council member Ho will, would like to appoint Lou Stewart, but we'll reach out to see if there's any interest, so, so we'll defer as well. Vice Mayor Nguyen would like to appoint Pamela Robinson, and council member Manzo would like to appoint Susan Gilby. For the community services and recreation commission, mayor Ta would like to defer. Vice Mayor Nguyen appoints Jason Gray, council member Doe appoints Terry Nguyen. Council member Ho appoints Khan Nguyen, council member Manzo appoints Jamison Power. Personnel board, you'd like to appoint Susie Elliott as the at-large member, and Anna Wells as the first alternate contingent upon her interest. And council member Doe is correct, she did submit an application for another committee, so she is verified. For planning commission, mayor Ta appoints Quinn Yao Nguyen. Vice Mayor Nguyen appoints Weston Seed. Council member Doe appoints Whit Pham. Council member Ho appoints Mark Nguyen. And council member Manzo appoints Don Anderson. For traffic commission, mayor Ta, mayor Ta appoints Nam Quan Nguyen. Vice Mayor Nguyen appoints Yu Hong. Council member Doe appoints Mike White. Council member Ho appoints Khan Nguyen. And council member Manzo appoints Claudia Steinmetz. For the homelessness task force to fill vacancies, vice mayor Nguyen will defer. Council member Ho appoints Jody Boyd. And councilman Manzo will appoint Patty Lemus. I'd also like to note that there is a community services and recreation commission position, that's an alternate position. That's a council appointee, so if you'd like to make a nomination for that, you can as well. Anyone would.
What was that? What was that again?
There's an, there's an alternate position for community services and recreation commission. It's not tied to any particular council member, it's just an alternate position. You don't have to fill it, but you can.
I'd like to recommend Toli Bu for that.
The maker and second, okay with that?
Yes, I'm okay with that. It's all good.
Okay, all right, so roll call vote. Council member Doe.
Yes.
Council member Ho?
Yes.
Council member Manzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero for those appointments for two-year terms with the exception of the homelessness task force. Very much.
All right, so for the homelessness task force, we're going to do the, you know, future meeting, am I right, or vice man Nguyen, council member Ho, oh, council member Ho already appoint, right?
Yes, she, she appointed, she appointed Ms. Jody Boyd.
Right.
The items that are, he appointed Patty Lemus.
So only, only vice man Nguyen?
Yeah, vice man Nguyen deferred that, and, you know, like, the, the items, the ones that are deferred, we'll defer it to the next meeting, and of course, at this time, if anybody would like to submit applications for consideration.
Like to apply, they more than welcome to do so, am I right?
Absolutely, we'll keep the application on file for, for a year.
Good, okay.
Let me ask this, I have questions. Did we disband the homeless task force after they finished their study?
So the staff, so when the, when the recommendations were made for, you know, that came about that task force, staff recommended to disband the homelessness task force. But at the time, council felt that more things needed to be, you know, discussed regarding homelessness, et cetera, and so council chose not to disband it. So it currently exists until the council formally disbands it, and so therefore, the the committee makeup, their term exists until that committee is disbanded. It's a, it's a life term.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so next we have common and request for agenda items from city council agency member, including AB 1234 report, when required. Vice man Nguyen? Any comment or request for agenda items?
Thank you. I have nothing to request today, so just wanted to thank everyone, thanks staff for working hard still, you know, during the pandemic time. I know that they, they've been there doing, you know, everything that they can. Appreciate for that.
That's it. Thank you. And council member Ho.
I don't have anything in addition to what I've already said during the meeting in regards to the homeless task force and, and asking did I need to make a separate agenda for that, if I can ask city council, I mean, uh, city attorney?
Can you restate that?
I asked, I asked staff earlier to see if they could reach out to Stanton, particularly the mayor Stanton. Dave Schaber, do I need to make an agenda, or do I need to agendize that, or do I need, is that a?
No, it sounds as though you'll be attending that. I don't know if there'll be another council member, but that's not an agendized meeting. It sounds like staff has direction to already set that meeting up, and then you can agendize it at a future date, once you have something to report.
Okay, then that's all I have. Thank you.
Council member Doe.
Thank you very much. You know, I'm excited that the, we finally have a, the governor finally lifted up the stay-at-home order and allow outdoor dining, and it's, it's exciting news. This is, I, this is a fresh air for our businesses in the city of Westminster. My concern right now is the, the elderly that are unable to register to get vaccine. They, you know, many, I, I, the past few weeks, I've been helping a lot of people signing up on the apps. Othena and whatever I can to, to get them vaccinated, but the common theme that I have, I have seen for, you know, if, if the elderly, the senior in our city, that fortunate enough to have their friends, families, associates who can help them register, and they, and they, they can get the vaccine, no problem, but those who unable to speak the language, doesn't have computer, doesn't have email account. They have a really tough time, and they don't know where to go. So I'm just wondering if the city staff, we can do anything, especially in the community service and the senior center. Is any way that we can establish a program to, to help our senior, you know, bilingual, Spanish and Vietnamese to help the, the senior, the elderly, because right now, they have nowhere to go. They try to, they want to register, but they have a tough time. And especially email, you, you know, of, of couples, elderly couple, two people, they have to have two separate email. And when they get in, you know, they, they, they get rejected, they keep using, using the same email, and they have to create password. You know, when they get the notification, had to come in lock on with the password and sign in, and then creating. You know, answer all the question online. It's just a huge hurdles for these seniors, you know, and, and I just, my, my heart it's just, it's like unbelievable. So I tried to do as much as I can, but I just, and on top of that, they need, some of them have physical limitation, they need transportation. And they don't know where to go, and it was so concerned, you know, it's, it's just, it's unbelievable. You know, Sherry, you know, and Diana, is anything that we can help? I, I reach out to Diane to get some, to get some information about transportation for our elderly or had the disabled people, or so I can get in touch with her more, but is anything that we can do immediately without council approval for the next two weeks, you know, time is an estimate here. People get vaccinated. Sherry?
Absolutely. Couldn't agree with you more, councilman. Doe, that is definitely an issue, and I know all council members have been receiving these same calls, and I believe Diana Dahmer is on the line, and her and her staff have been fantastic during this pandemic and taking on yet another task. And they have been reaching out to retirees, not retirees, I'm sorry, got retiree stuff on the brain right now. They've been reaching out to our seniors, and Diane, are you on?
I am on. My, yeah, my video isn't on, so I apologize for that, but we have started reaching out. We have 304 seniors, as our emergency operations coordinator reported earlier in the meeting. And we have, as of today, we've created 10 temporary email addresses and signed up 10 seniors, so we're doing as we can, we have the ability to do it in three languages. I don't have that capacity to do it five days a week. So tomorrow, we're going to be hitting the pavement, making new, making contacts with the seniors and walking, walking them through the process. We are the ones that are actually going to be checking these email addresses because these folks don't have internet access, they don't have computers, so we are taking on a huge, huge task here, so we're doing our best with the resources that we have. Is 100% of the people going to be 100% happy? I can't make that promise, but we're doing what we can on behalf of community services, so we are aware of the need, and we rose to the occasion, and we will do what's needed.
Yeah, it touched my heart to, to hear that, Diane. I really appreciate that, because the, the, the seniors that we have here, they have a tough time. So I, I guess, based of, based on what you're saying, that, that the city staff or whoever volunteer that we have will answer the email and, and contact the senior and help fill out the application and arrange transportation if they need to, to, to help them to get the vaccine, is that correct?
Yep, that's what we're offering up for the services we can provide. It depends, I mean, there's going to be capacity as it relates, so right now, we have our list is about 30, we have 32 seniors. Out of the 304 seniors that we have on the vaccine list, 32 of them need the emails. And they need the, the ability for us to check them, so we have committed to do it. It's a temporary email address. Once they receive the second dose, we're deleting that email, and we're, you know, omitting that account. So, I mean, it, like I said, though, I mean, is the plan 100%, we're doing what we can with the resources we have, so. Learning as we go.
Okay, so we monitor the email account for them, and then reach out to them by whatever phone signal we have to, to get them outside. Awesome. I have a question, you know, in, in Long Beach, Long Beach have a senior partner program that work closely with the police department. That basically, they, they, they assign a, a city vehicle to come out and check the seniors in the city, you know, those who live alone, elderly, so do we have such a program in our city? Especially in the PD?
Yeah, I can't defer to, I don't know what PD offers, but I know that throughout this, we're on week 43, and we are making calls to the seniors that we're aware of, that are alone, that do not have family members checking on them. So we are reaching out to them every single week, so we're documenting it, we're identifying their needs, we're delivering items as needed, we're doing what we can with the resources we have. So as for PD, I, I'm not, I don't want to jump into that area.
Do we have from, anyone from the PD can answer the questions?
Yes, sir. We don't have anything like that right now currently with the PD, but as we were sitting here talking, and I'm listening to you talk about your concerns, that idea actually popped into my head about how can we as a police department work better with Diana and her team going out. I know we have several Vietnamese-speaking officers that can help in this area, so my plan is moving forward to, to meet with Diana, come up with, you know, have a meeting with her and see what we can do as a police department to help her and her crew out to go out and, and reach these seniors and, and get them vaccinated, and, and do everything we can together as a city instead of an individual department, so it kind of sounds like we're on the same page with that, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Basically, the, the senior volunteer program, being trained by the, by the PD in Long Beach, and they have a, usually two, every shift that they, they volunteer on a elder, you know, senior citizen that volunteer their time to go out there, basically, check on the cities, senior citizen in the city, and make sure that they, okay, make sure they, they, they have somebody to talk to, you know, pay attention to them, keep track of who's need help. And, you know, who needs whatever, they will go out, they have an active list that they, that they visit like, on a regular basis to make sure that they, okay. Is any way that you can do something like that, or do you need the city council to, to implement such a program that we can train, volunteer, a senior citizen in the city, and train them how to safely contact our senior citizen in, in term of crisis, or on a regular basis to make sure that they're okay? And train them how to safely contact our senior citizen in in term of crisis or on a regular basis to make sure that they okay?
I I mean, that'd probably be a great question for Christian to answer. On on the surface, I don't think so. I think it's just a direction we can take as a a city and move forward with that and kind of collaborate together. I know with the police department, we have senior volunteers that go out and do residential checks when people are on vacation. We have police aides that, you know, have the ability to go out and and check on some seniors. And I mean, I think there's a lot of things we can do with a program like this. I just have to reach out maybe to somebody in Long Beach and kind of pick their brain and see, see what guidance they could give us. And kind of make it our own and and see what we can do with it and, you know.
That's awesome. That's awesome. Thank you. Can we put the agenda at such an item and have us to come back to see that we can implement a volunteer program? Because senior partner that that being trained by the PD. And then those volunteer will go out on a, you know, so that we take all the resources from away from the police officer who who do that. You know, take care of the the safety of the resident of the city and have these volunteer senior citizen that can come out here and and check on on the residents. Can we agenda night, please?
All right, I honor that request.
Okay, so that was a request by Councilmember Doe, seconded by Mayor Ta, and that's to take a look at a volunteer program. So roll call vote, Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Vice Mayor. Yes, yes.
And Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero to add that to future agenda.
Anything else?
That's it, thank you very much. I I want to acknowledge, you know, our city staff. I'll see interim city manager for your outstanding job. It's a it's a tough time for everybody and we put together as a city. But by, you know, top-notch service to our resident and I have nothing but my utmost respect for each and every member, actually, the staff and police department. So thank you, be well and take care.
Thank you. Councilmember Manzo?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yes, first, I'd like to say, echo Councilmember Doe's comments about our staff. I've been out there, it kind of. Kind of makes me wonder, it's like I go, I've been out there at the city hall and it's late at night and staff still there and I, when are you guys going to go home? It's like, it's late. So I mean, you guys are definitely very, very impressive and I'm I'm glad that we have you, have you working for us. And it's, I'm really take it to heart how how much effort and time you you put into helping our community. Next, I'd like to just report for AB 1234. I attended two virtual meetings for the League of California Cities the last week. Got to do a couple more for for newbie, new council member. I just kind of want to ask a update with maybe Marwan. I knew back, back, back a while ago, we had a pothole patrol going on. I don't know if that's still going on. If it is, maybe with this, people now, you know, we have more people at home, maybe we can have more access to. To get to filling some of those potholes if need be.
Sure, if I may, we definitely have open lines, anybody who has a pothole, they can call it into the yard. And then we definitely have an ongoing program, especially now with the rain coming or after the rain. So that's, yeah, anybody's welcome to call it in. And then we did, I did check the reach you gave me on Trask between Hoover and Beach, I checked it today. And it does need some help, so I reported that. And I also reported magnolia from hazard to bolts, I know there's some potholes there. So anybody who has potholes, please call the yard and we'll take care of.
Excuse me, Marwan, can you also mention that we have sandbags available?
Yes, yeah, we also have a very strong sandbag program for residents at the yard. And then we, the rules is that you have to be, of course, you have to show a driver license, that you live within the city. And you are entitled up to twelve bags. So anybody can come to the yard and we even load it, load it for them. So we have a lot of supply of sandbags.
Great, thank you, Marwan.
You're welcome.
The issue I have is that it's a code enforcement. I know I don't want to put it, put this out there, but can we do something about having all those political signs picked up? They've been out there for quite some time. Kind of, I think they exceeded the time limit that they're allowed to be out there. If you can get code enforcement, either contact the candidate or or just get rid of them, I don't know what the process is. But can we please get that handled? At this time.
CPU and and I'll talk to Mark in between CPU and code enforcement, we'll take a look at it.
All right, thank you, appreciate it. And at that, this time, that's all I got, I just want to really thank everybody. Right now, it's, there's a lot of issues out there that we can all come up with. But right now, the most important thing that we got to deal with is getting through this pandemic, keeping everybody safe, getting everybody vaccinated. Kind of really disappointed at the this whole, the way that the system was implemented with the app and and having to, you know, have an email. I I kind of wish their county would have came up with some other kind of formula. Because our seniors, you know, like the mayor, what, you know, brought up, the Councilmember Doe, all those. It just doesn't make any sense for our seniors, you know, to have to go through all that. I wish maybe they could have came up with a driver's license and some other kind of formula. I understand they don't want to, thousands of people showing up at the same time. But I think we could have came up, they could have came up with some other type of way to get our seniors vaccinated. Because, right, it doesn't make any sense, a lot of, I know my parents, they don't, they 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 barely know how to use the smartphone, let alone develop a. Email and password, they don't know how to do all that, you know, they, it just doesn't make any sense that that our seniors, for our senior community, they'd have to go through that. It makes no sense at all, I think. We're smart enough, or they're smart enough, I would hope to come up with some other kind of plan, formula to get our seniors vaccinated. Hopefully, I don't know if Sherry or or Mr. Acosta can bring that forward, talk to them. See, there has to be some other way that that we can accomplish this. You can't just be, you know, having to use all this technology, get, our seniors just don't have that ability, they don't have that access to that. It just doesn't make any sense. So maybe when you guys meet tomorrow, if you can kind of bring that issue and really hammer that issue really hard with them. It's just doesn't make any sense. So again, just thank you, everybody, and please stay safe out there, you know, do your best to keep yourself safe and your neighbors safe. And just look out for one another. And thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Councilmember Manzo for your report, we appreciate that. And I want to thanks all the members of City Council for your hard work. I know that you've been helping many seniors out there. And I myself, the last several days, I've been helping a lot of seniors. And I really want to thanks our interim city manager for participating in many meetings, online meeting, virtual meeting with many other agency. I really, really appreciate that. I want to thanks our community service and recreation director, Dana Doppa, for her dedication. The last few days, I've been giving her like a list of seniors who really, really need help. And I think that her department is excellent, outstanding for providing services to many senior in our city. And also senior who live outside the city, I really, really appreciate that. And with that, I'd like to adjourn the meeting. Next regular meeting will be on Wednesday, February 12, 2021, at 7:00 PM. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.